I'm gonna turn this back up. And uh. We're good to go.
Are you ready?
Yep.
I'm gonna bring this organizational and regular town council meeting to order. Today is Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty five. Would you please do a roll call, Madam Clark?
I will. Counselor Bragdon. Chair Danfor.
Here.
Counselor Dumay.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
Excuse.
Excused, thank you. Counselor Mackin.
Here.
Council McGlaughlin.
Here.
And Counselor Pelletier.
Here.
Very good. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So we do have one adjustment to the agenda. It's the addition of resolve number seven dash two thousand and twenty five. I'm seeking approval of minutes from October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five executive session. Oh, that was a tie. So motion made by Counselor Bragdon, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Uh, any comment on those? On those minutes? The end on, we will take a vote. All those, you don't have to do a roll call. All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. We'll go into new business. Um, Counselor Bragdon. Can I have you read a order number two thirty one, please?
Order number two thirty one dash two thousand and twenty five, providing for execution of the town warrant for November tenth, two thousand and twenty five. It is ordered that the town warrant for November tenth, two thousand and twenty five, in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty five dollars and eighty five cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Bragdon, seconded by Counselor McGlaughlin. Have heavy hitters to share with us.
What?
Goodness.
Uh, four thousand, seven hundred and eighty five dollars to American Concrete for the new back steps that are heated and wonderful. Uh, four thousand, two hundred and fifty to Bangor Abatement for the door trims in the fire station. Uh, four thousand, eight hundred and seventy seven dollars and fourteen cents to Bounty for our color display slash grant from. Three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty four cents to Dead River, that's for fuel. Eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty six dollars and nine cents to uh, the financial services for the credit card. Three thousand, six hundred and thirty eight dollars and fifty nine cents to Emery Lee. Uh, that's for, I believe, sand. Uh, four thousand, eight hundred and forty one dollars and twenty cents to Jacket Enterprise. That's the CBDG Assad project. Uh, six thousand, five hundred and fifty two dollars and eighteen cents to Jordan's Plower. Uh, four thousand, six hundred and four dollars and twenty cents to Main Tech for software. Nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and forty five cents to uh, MWS tipping fees. Two thousand, seven hundred and sixty six dollars and eighty eight cents to Napa for different parts, uh, multiple different pieces of equipment. Two thousand, eight hundred and sixty one dollars and thirteen cents to salt or salt. Uh, four thousand, forty dollars and fifty eight cents to News Me Incorporated. That's for Wood Ash Disposal. Twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to Mike's Pool. That's for the search tank and the finishing stuff with uncooking. Three thousand, nine hundred dollars to Van uh.
Ben Time.
Time. For tax appraisal services, three thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars and twenty one cents for wastewater. And that's it.
Any other council comment on the order? Any public comment on the order? Seeing none, back to the council for vote on order number two thirty one. All those in favor? That passes six zero. Counselor Bragdon, can I have you read order two thirty three, please? Or two thirty two, I'm sorry, out of myself.
That's okay. Order two thirty two dash two thousand and twenty five, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for November tenth, two thousand and twenty five. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for November tenth, two thousand and twenty five, in the amount of thirty nine thousand, four hundred and fifty three dollars and seventy eight cents to your vibrant.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Bragdon, seconded by Counselor McGlaughlin. Heavy hitter?
Uh.
One?
Twenty four thousand, seven dollars and zero cents to Allen's Environmental Service Incorporated for sewer cleanout. Three thousand, six hundred and eighty two dollars to main water and seven thousand, three hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty three cents to Millenock at appropriate first.
Good. Any other council comment on the order? Any public comment on the order? Seeing none, back to the council for vote. All those in favor? That passes six zero. Counselor McGlaughlin, can I have you read order number two thirty three, please?
Certainly. Order number two thirty three dash two thousand and twenty five, providing for ratification of the November fourth, two thousand and twenty five municipal election result. It is ordered that the results of the November fourth, two thousand and twenty five municipal election are hereby ratified as follows. Total ballots cast, twelve fifty one. Town council, three year vote for two. Melville Asher Boo the Fourth, seven hundred and sixteen. Michael A. Madore, four sixty six. Megan E. Runyon, six twenty three. Gilda G. Stratton, three hundred and twenty eight. Blanks, three hundred and sixty nine. School board, three year vote for two. Kevin Gregory, seven hundred and forty. Kevin Libby, nine hundred and eight. Thomas Malcolm, five hundred and fifteen. Blanks, three hundred and thirty nine. Note, wardens return of votes cast and clerks certification attached.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGlaughlin, seconded by Counselor Bragdon. Council comment on this order? Council Dumay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for an off-year election, this was a very successful, very. Very busy. Election year for Millenock. So I think it was a great turnout for our citizens. Safe, safe elections. And I'd like to thank everybody that ran, graduate people that that won their seats. So thank you for participating. Keep the ball moving.
Any other council comment? Any? Did the manager have your hand out? Before we go to the public?
I. If you buy, I would love to. Message that. See. Chin.
Yes, please. Yes, please. That was a great time to do that.
It is.
So if you look, if we look up on the screen, Sandy Sullivan's got her hand up. Sandy?
Oh, yes.
Would you like to come on? Would you like to come on screen? And speak?
Oh, Peter's gonna clarify my feeling.
All right, her hands up, but we don't see her face. Perhaps you proceed.
Sandy, I was planning to read your message if you'd like to. Come off. Uh, you turn camera on. You're welcome to speak to yourself.
I would say, go ahead and.
Okay.
Do that.
This message was, see. I'm saying.
Yeah.
Then. So. Uh, it says.
Please.
Sandy, you're up there. Would you like to unmute and say your message yourself? You are still muted.
Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. Um, I have communicated this to Diana already. But I think this town owes a huge thank you to Diana. Um, I, for the first time, participated in a very small way in the election. Um, I have been voting since I was eighteen. I am now eighty. That means a lot of elections. I have never really paid attention to the work that goes into it. For the first time, I saw a little bit of that work. And Diana does a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. We agree tenfold, hundredfold. Thank you, Diana. Any other count, any other public comment on the order?
You may. I would love to follow up. I have a great team and um, yeah, I just will put it out to the whole team and but thank you, Sandy, for the um, acknowledgements.
Any other public comment? Back to the council for a vote on order number two thirty three. All those in favor? That passes six zero. Counselor Dumay? May I have you read order number two thirty four, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Order number two thirty four dash two thousand and twenty five. Providing for the ratification of the November fourth. Two thousand and twenty five municipal referendum results. It is ordered that the results of the November fourth, two thousand and twenty five municipal referendum are hereby ratified as follows. Total ballots cast. Twelve fifty two. Question one. C two oh two charter amendment. Yes, votes are one thousand and ninety nine, no votes is one hundred and thirty four, blanks nineteen. Question number two. C two zero five charter amendment. Yes, votes. Eight hundred and sixty, no votes, three hundred and sixty three, blanks twenty nine. Question three. C three zero one charter amendment. Yes, eight hundred and nine votes, no, three hundred and twenty eight votes.
Excuse me, eight hundred and ninety eight. Eight hundred and nine.
Thank you. Blanks twenty six. Question number four, C four oh two charter amendment, yes. One thousand, one hundred and twenty eight, no votes, one hundred and four. Blanks twenty. Question five. C four oh five. Yes, votes, nine hundred and thirty five, no votes, two hundred and twenty nine, blanks eighty eight. Question number six, four zero five. B. Yes, votes, nine hundred and eighty seven, no votes, one hundred and seventy, blanks ninety five. Question seven, C one zero one two. Yes, votes. Nine hundred and ninety four, no, one hundred and sixty three, blanks ninety five. Note, the wardens return of votes cast, clerks certification attached.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dumay, seconded by Counsel McGlaughlin. Any council comment on this? Counselor Pelletier?
Yes, I'd like to. Really thankful for public supporting amendment changes, it's a long, long process. And special thanking to Matt for being back and forth. Thank you.
Any other council comment? Yes, Counselor Bragdon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was gonna send a special thank you to Diana. Um, she built some. Finders for people to read down there that gave a description on what it was. There was a lot of confusion after some articles that were posted that were badly worded, in my opinion. That added even more confusion, um, what we were suggesting for changes. So thank you for having that. I genuinely think it made a difference. And thank you to those that came out and voted in favor.
Your Counselor Bragdon. Council. Any other council comment? To the public for comment on this order. Right, seeing none, back to the council for a vote on order number two thirty four. All those in favor? Passes six zero. So this is gonna take us to our resolve. Number seven, a proclamation. Honoring Don Nodine, and I'm gonna take the pleasure in reading that myself. I'm not gonna pass this. On or off. So this is a resolution honoring Donald Nodine for his volunteerism toward local outdoor recreation. Whereas Donald has served, has volunteered tirelessly preparing and grooming cross-country trails at the Bait Hole and the Northern Timber Cruisers for more than forty years. And whereas Donald has continuously pursued suggestions in an effort to create new trails and to improve skiing and snowshoeing, paying special attention to beginners. Creating trails especially for beginners to safely explore the activity. And whereas Donald creates and provides free trail maps available for all, all in the trailhead parking lots, maintains a do-it-yourself hotline for anyone to call for trail conditions. Always returning calls to those who leave a message. And whereas Donald keeps a list of other volunteers and calls when he needs help, but is often the one actively working towards the betterment of local cross-country skiing and snowshoeing. And whereas Donald greets everyone he sees on the trails to ask where they're from, keeping a running tally of the number of cars in the parking lot at any given time. Including where those came from, always encouraging others to do the same. Whereas all those who use local trails are consistently impressed. By the tremendous work Donald has put into these volunteer efforts, his remarkable attention to detail and his friendly cheerful demeanor. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Millenock Town Council, in council assembled. On November tenth, two thousand and twenty five, here, does hereby recognize, honor and thank. Donald Nodine for his forty-plus years of committed volunteerism to the community and to the outdoor recreation in the Katahdin region.
Second.
Motion made by Chair Danfor, seconded by um. By the rest of the council, I'm gonna by Counselor Bragdon. Um, and before I go to any other um, council comment and public comment, I'm just very happy that Don, that you're in the audience tonight. And um, Dave Laban, who's sitting right next to you, had reached out to the council. And asked for this very special honor and so grateful to get that email and to pass it along and to make this happen tonight. So. Um, thank you for being here as well. Are there any um, council who want to speak to this before I go to the public? I will defer to, we'll go to the public. I think there's some, some people in the audience that have a word or two. Please come to the podium.
Thank you, John Raymond, two thirty six Highland Avenue, Millenock, Maine, and also President of the Northern Timber Cruisers. I uh, got an email a few. Several weeks ago about this resolve. And I was happy to see it. Uh, we kinda emailed back and forth with Pete. And Jane and, and talked to a few people. And I think this is uh, well overdue. Um, Don, as I know, over the years. Has been uh, pretty much. The go-to guy for the snowmobile, cross-country ski trails. Uh, on the snowmobile side, we're always looking for people grooming and stuff like that, but on the. Cross-country ski side, we've had a pretty good uh, group of volunteers and he managed it really well. Something I never really had to worry about. Uh. His dedication to it is unmatched. Uh. He's out there pretty much every day when there's snow on the ground and he can tell you how many days he's been out there and choose well over a hundred in the wintertime. So uh. We are in the process of uh. Getting a sign to put out there with the cross-country bait hole trail sign. In addition to it, to dedicate this, this system to Don. Uh, I think that uh. It's, it's something that uh, been needed for a long time. And uh. We couldn't have done it without him. Uh. We have uh, well-known in the area for our cross-country ski trails. And of course, they're that no charge to anybody. A lot of places you go, you gotta pay to use them. But we've uh, kept them open to the public for no charge. And we've got a couple groom and sleds out there that uh, can be used at any time to groom the trails with. And the only thing that uh, we really need from here is some snow. And I don't know if you got Don here tonight by telling we're gonna give him some money for the trails. He did show up.
He did show up.
We, we worked out on getting him here, so thank you and I thank you, Don Nodine.
And that's exciting news. What you said, we're gonna have a sign put out at the bait hole recognition and with his, with his name on the sign. Any other um, public comment about this resolve? Before I bring him up front and we're gonna get a picture. Oh, let me, oh. We gotta take a vote first. Thank you, Madam Clark. That's why you're so awesome. As a reminder down. So all those in favor of resolve number seven, that's two thousand and twenty five. That passes six zero. Thank you. Who wants to come up with?
Your moment to shine, Don. Thirty one. It's beautiful.
But so.
It's bizarre when I have a good shot.
The thing that's um, missing this evening. During the spring, summer, fall, there's a lot of people enjoying the bait hole trails just to take their dog for a walk or. Uh. Couple of friends go, going together. So the bait hole trails are definitely used. Twelve months out of the year.
Yes.
Uh, not just. When there's snow on the ground.
Thank you. Thank you, Donald. Yes. And those trails are much loved by the community. I know many. Thank you, thank you. So, before we swear in, uh, you, town council members, I plan to swear at the old council member that's leaving here, Council Dumay. We can't let you go without having.
Well, without having a, a few words.
A roast.
My, yeah, that's a little roast. A little tiny one, my, my right-hand person here over here. Um, I will just go first and I made a few notes, so I wouldn't.
I brought it, brother.
I wouldn't forget. See, that was one of the one, first thing or third thing I have down. Not sure who will fill the role when it comes to his sense of humor, but maybe that's a good thing. That was one of the top, top qualities in this job. You gotta have a sense of humor, so um. Yeah, thank you for reading my notes, but I know you didn't. So I just, I just wanna say, I really appreciate, and perhaps you did. See, that's it. You never know where he's staying. On things he keeps you guessing, but I really appreciate the different perspectives you brought to the table. You really um, it was, it really sort of, you know, opened my eyes and made me learn and grow as a counselor as well, so I'm really gonna miss that. But. I also know you're still in the community and I, you'll be in this. I'll be able to get some input and output from you at different times. And along those lines, and I talk about community, um. It was admirable the amount of time you actually spent with community members, and I know community members sought you out to speak specifically to you, and that says a lot. Um, that you listened to the community and um, shared information openly. With the transparency um, from up here. Um. Yeah, I'm really gonna, I'm really gonna miss you. Appreciate the last three years. I spent on the, on the bench together. I will then pass it along. If there's any other counselor that would like to have a stab. Counselor Bragdon.
Uh, Jesse. Gonna miss you. I've learned a lot more under you than I did in three years by myself with the council that I had. Um, even the year that you weren't on the council, you were guiding me and giving me suggestions and comments, and I have. Full faith that will continue even when you're not a counselor again. Um. Sad to see you go, but I, I definitely will miss the movie jokes between you and Peter. Um, but I, as Jane said, I'll continue to use you as a resource. It's uh, definitely worth every penny.
Any other counselors? Counsel, Counselor Mackin? Counselor Mackin?
I just wanna thank you. You and Bob both were, took me under your wing and you showed me a lot. I'm really gonna miss you. I love sitting next to you.
I even showered today. I don't get to shower after work and I gotta come right over here.
Say it up. Uh, Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yeah, um. I too am gonna miss you, Counsel Dumay. I do, um, I do appreciate your sense of mo- most of the time. But um. You always had a different perspective. You always brought up. Things or thought about things in a way that I didn't necessarily think of them, so it challenged me. To, you know, it just challenged me. Um, we didn't always agree on everything, but I always respected your, your view. And I did call you a few times to ask you something, and I, I will truly miss working. Thank you.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah, well, I especially appreciated you when you came back. And as said by other council, always have the same view. But you've become a real bad. And uh. Hope to see in the audience, plugging the two cents in there. Back me that.
Orders.
Is there anybody on from the public that wants to make?
Yeah. If I may, Madam Chair. Um. So I didn't have anything prepared, but I do know that I, I need to um. As a clerk and a sister, I do appreciate what Jesse has brought to the council. His humor um, has helped in tough situations. Um, as well as uh, his points when he's on point are very valid and everything that comes from his. Stomach to mind is definitely thought through um. On all spectrum. So just thank you for bringing that and I hope um. That is continued on this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Mr. Manager, and then we'll go to.
Oh.
Yeah, wait.
Uh, I've, hmm, we've shared all the mushy stuff between uh, Jesse and. But I just. So that the public. Jesse Dumay is the epitome of. A strong town. So in. This man embodies. And representation of. From all angles, all walks of life, all demographics, uh, votes against his own. Personal beliefs, it is, you know, shared on uh, him by the people that elected him to that mission. Uh. I'm coming up on four years soon in his position. Attention for quite a while before. Very strong. Uh, council. That's this town. See.
Yeah. Sandy, can you come on video so that we can have you speak? Your hand is up as that. Thank you.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset. I just wanna say I am one of those members of the public. Who has gone to Jesse on numerous occasions. Um. He's very knowledgeable about what's going on in this town. He speaks most of the time. Things that I haven't even thought about. Things that the other counselors have not brought up. You can tell that Jesse is very well-prepared. Thank you, Jesse, for all you've done.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else?
One oh seven three School Street. Uh, I've been affiliated with this town for a few years and worked with a lot of different counselors. But as Peter said, Jesse is. A special counselor. He, he really cared and he really did his homework. If I had a problem or an issue, I'd find Jesse was the first one there to talk it through. Why do we need to do this? No, I needed to convince. But if you could convince him, he was a. Great supporter. And he was a big supporter of public safety. I'm gonna miss him. Thank you, Jesse. Really appreciate.
Any help? Dumay?
That's funny now, isn't it?
Where are your prepared notes? Let's read.
Do you want me to tell a joke first?
Waiting to wake up, joke. Thanks for all the nice words. Oh. Sandy. Just my colleagues, thank you. I didn't wanna, didn't think I was gonna get emotional tonight. Uh. Socks, guys, come on. This is one of those jobs that when you are in it, you're wondering why and heck. Got into it and one of those jobs that when you're out of it. You crave to be back in it. And not for. Y'all will find out, there's not much powers, but there's no power up here. Power's in the people.
Right.
There's no grandstanding. There's no, it's, it's not what you think when you first sign up for it, and it's certainly not what you expect when you be. Just wanted to serve best I could, stay true to myself, stay true to my. Just wanted to serve best I could, stay true to myself, stay true to my conscience. Bend but don't break. That was my personal policy. You guys said, think everything through. There's a lot of different angles. There's a lot of us not educated. Everyone went to secondary school, don't have any formal training in much. A lot of people know history, but, uh, just wanted to serve my town and serve it proudly. You guys, you guys are great. You guys are great. Don't listen to the trolls out there on Facebook and on social media. A lot of them are drunk and sitting at home and can't get out of their own way and they know who they are. They don't. Don't let the pressures of life up here get to you down there because there's all of us sitting up here now, especially in that chair seat. There's a lot of pressure and there's a lot that gets thrown around. Just need to, sometimes you can have a thick skin, sometimes you can't. Sometimes it gets to you. Sometimes the public breaks you down. Same people that you're there to support, same people that you're there to represent. I was never up here really because I had a whole bunch of great ideas for this town because it's not really what I thought that this job was all about. It was kind of harnessing power of the people, listening to the voices, I've runned my head, the voices out there. Listening to the people and try to, try to coalesce that into the embodiment of what, what we're supposed to be here and, and try to do that and be as fiscally responsible as you can and what the times allow. We're in different times than we were in generations past. So we're dealing with different, different ballgame. Keep your ears to the ground, listen to the people, but make your own decision. I guess is my best unsolicited advice is kind of listen to your conscience. Your gut will tell you what to do. Be prepared. You guys are absolutely right. Be, be prepared when you come up here. Know, do your homework. Like I told when I was chairperson. For this council, the first thing I said is you're gonna have to do your own homework. I'm not gonna be there to lead you by the hand. I'm not gonna try to convince you. I'm not gonna try to do your homework for you. This is people, people need honest, genuine people up here. No matter what your spiritual belief is or your, your, your party affiliation. This is not really the time and place for that here. That's outside of these walls. So, and we just learned that in, in Senate. Thank God that the government's gonna be opening back up. Thank you, Senator King, for, for joining, to open the government back up, get, get back to the business of the people. That's the root word of politics. It's poly, which is, comes from the Greek word meaning people. So, I mean, sometimes we forget that, that we're supposed to be here for the people. Not for any specific agenda or not to have this goal or this goal or this goal or this goal. It's, and that might be one of my, is I, I'll close with this. Oh, might be one of my, if I had any regrets up here is because I feel like I left some things on. Don't like things that are unresolved. Right now, there's things that are unresolved. That's part of living body of a council. This is a living, breathing body and it changes. Continue on, nothing stays stagnant. Somebody else picks up the torch, goes with it. So somebody's gonna be here to keep the wolves at bay. I don't know who that's gonna be. Hopefully it's one of you two. Somebody's gonna guard the hen house because trust me, the vultures are circling. And it's gonna, what's going on out there right now is gonna crush what's going on in here. And what happens in here in these chambers affects the whole town. Every decision that you guys make affects the whole town. Yeah, I'm gonna be paying attention. I'll be participating when I can and I still have that need to serve. I don't know if that'll ever go away, so I'll find a capacity to do that. But yeah, for me, my family, um, this was a tremendous honor, tremendous honor to be voted in this twice at two separate times, not as an incumbent or anything, but two separate times every, so this was a tremendous honor that my community has given me. So I love them. Hopefully I get a little bit of that love back and that you guys sat here tonight. Makes me feel that. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor DeMay. The great sermon. No, uh.
Happen again. The one thing, the, the one thing he didn't want and made very clear.
That's right. I know. I was just getting, thinking about that. He, he, there was something that he didn't want and we opened, we opened up the door to that. Your words are very wise and, um, well spoken. Again, why we all appreciate you so much. And, um, you know, Counselor Higgins isn't here. This would have been his last meeting as well. And he let us know, um, at our last meeting that he was gonna be out of, he, he wasn't, wasn't gonna be out of the area. He wasn't gonna be able to join us. But we have said our goodbyes to him as well. Appreciate two of you that have served. So that takes us, Madam Clerk, to swearing in you, town council member. So I turn that over to you.
And afterwards.
Did last year.
Here's Anna. Here's some photos being taken. So you can read off the bottom. It's literally, um, or you can just repeat after me, so we're in Iranian. I solemnly swear that I support the construction and obey the laws of the United States and the United States of Maine. I am all for, all for fast, of the Thursday, the provisions out of charter and in order to such a town. And will pay greatest challenge due to the office of town council. Thank you. Congratulations.
Are we gonna? Your best listen on her.
We'll listen to her. I'm gonna have to have you stand back there, Ryan, and then her. Raise your right hand.
Oh, you're fine.
You'll filter in. Hey, Counselor.
Very proud of you, brother.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Asher, I'll show you how to adjust that chair.
Yeah.
Is that the one you swapped?
Wow. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. I didn't embarrass it. Yeah, that's all right.
So once you guys get settled in, I'll just take nominations from down here.
I think we're, I think we're all ready to go. Okay. So nominations are now in order, um, for the office of council chair.
Do I have, do I hear nominate?
I do. I nominate, uh, Counselor Bragden.
Any other nominations? Hearing no other further nominations, um, nominations are now closed. So I'll take all those in favor of the first nomination of Counselor Bragden. Any opposed? Any abstention? With that being said, would you mind reading order number 235 for me, Counselor Pelletier?
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Order 235, 2025, providing for election of town council chairman. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council elects Councilman Matt Bragden as its chairman for a one-year term commencing on November 2025 and ending November 2026 or until a successor is duly elected.
That's it. I'm gonna prolong this as much as I can. Are there any council comment? Are there any council comment on order number 235?
No, I'm gonna happily pass over the cattle. Well, you can get a picture if you would like.
Uh, that's okay.
Well, I will, I will say if I, if I can, please, that, um, Chair Danforth, you've done a very extremely well job over the past year. I've seen your growth. So I just want that acknowledged as a clerk. Um, good job. Well done. And, and is there any public comment? Come right on up.
Wow.
Prolong it.
Jeff Campbell, airport manager. Um, Jane, well done this year. It was impressive to watch you operate this. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the kind words.
Yes. 2010 Somerset Street, Millinocket, Maine. Madam Chair, thank you for serving as chairperson. Extremely difficult job and you did it and you did it to the best of your ability. You talked many, many times and like Clark said, you have grown into the position. If only you had another year. And to Counsel Bragden, Chair Bragden, thank you for stepping up again. I know that you wanted this several, several years now. Everybody's deserving of it. Chair Danforth was deserving of it. You're clearly deserving of it as well. I'm glad that you have this opportunity. You're on the hot seat.
I'll be calling.
Any other public comment?
No, I'll just make a comment. It is my honor to serve, um, and to have been elected. And I too am a person that, um, services in my blood. So appreciated the opportunity. And I too feel like I grew into the position. Takes a while. There's a lot. It's, there's a lot, um, to know, to do. Lot behind the scenes that community members, public, they just don't see, um, to make this happen. So it's a big, it's, it's a big job and it's a lot of responsibility. I think, thank everybody that supported me and helped me through this. And I look forward to taking a little side step over here to the left and I'll continue to, uh, do as much as I can behind the scenes.
Okay. Seeing no other public comment, back to the council.
Oh, we need to vote.
All those, I'm just giving them the opportunity. How about all those in favor?
Again. Yeah.
All those opposed and abstention. 601 with Bragden standing. Thank you. And congratulations.
Want me to take my mic or not?
I'm officially gonna hand it over to you though, no matter what.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, who's ready for some states?
Okay. Next on the agenda is town manager's report. Uh, Mr. Manager, I know there is none scheduled, but do you have anything for us?
Uh, the C.
Perfect. Moving on. Uh, order number 236 dash 2025, Counselor Gould. Can I have you read that, please?
Order 236, 2025, providing for acceptance of town council procedure policy. Is ordered that Millinocket Town Council re-adopt the town council meeting procedure policy proposed as amended on November 13th, 2023, a copy of which is attached to the order.
Second.
Motion made by cap, what?
I said, take your paper.
Motion made by Counselor Gould, seconded by Counselor McWallan. Uh, any counselor comments? I have one. Um, Jane, I just want to thank you for, uh, going over this with me, making some changes to the RMMI, finding some stuff to, uh, to add on. Um, this is the one.
So this isn't the one. So no.
Okay, nevermind. Bring that one later.
Policy will change, um, the wording in this at some point, but we need to bring it.
Perfect. All right. A new one that comes soon.
Yeah, but until then, this is.
Any other public comment? I mean, a counselor comment? Any public comment? Back to the council's for a vote. Counselor Wrangell, can I have you read order number 237 to 2025, please?
Order 237 dash 2025, providing for approval of reappointment to planning board Jake Crawford. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the reappointment of John Crawford to the planning board for a five-year term to expire November 23rd. Note, if approved, this board has one alternate position open expiring 12/27 with Megan, myself withdrawal and resignation.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor McWallan, motion by Counselor Wrangell. Any counsel comment? Seeing none. Any public?
Yes, if prior counselor Dumay would like to, uh, participate in volunteerism still, the planning board and also the recreation, uh, committee both had, um, some, uh, withdrawal. So just keep that noted if you're willing to serve. Mr. Dumay. The rec committee. Advisory committee, yes.
Any, any other public comment? Seeing none. Back to the council. All those in favor? Zero. Great. Counselor Danforth, can I have you read order number 238 dash 2025?
Sir Chairman, order number 238 dash 2025, providing for authorization to amend airport project contract with Hoyle Tanner and Associates, Associates, Inc. Whereas necessary amendments to this contract have identified in relation, have been identified in relation to the scope of work and estimate of engineering costs, increasing the maximum amount of agreement by 26,800 to 716,525. And whereas the project remains in the FAA DOT reimbursable agreement, allowing for this reimbursement of 97.5% of these project costs, increasing the town's portion of this project by $670, a total of $17,714. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council authorizes the town manager to sign and return the attached airport project contract amendment.
Motion by Counselor Danforth, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Counselor comment?
What a bargain.
What was that?
What a bargain.
Yeah, right. Such a bargain. $17,914 for the airport and the plans for it. I completely agree. Any public comments? Seeing none. Back to the council's for a vote. All those in favor? Seven, zero. Counselor Mackin, can I have you read order number 239 dash 2025?
Order number 239 dash 2025, providing for approval of one-year pro-PR equipment service plan. Whereas the Millinocket Fire Department's current pro-PR equipment service plan is due to expire in November of 2025 and is critical component to the longevity of certain emergency PR equipment related to the safety of our citizens and visitors. And whereas the two attached quotes have been acquired in an effort to avoid a lapse in these services, it is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council, at the advice of their administrative team, approve. of their administrative team, approve the attached one-year pro-pair equipment services plan agreement. It is further ordered that the necessary funding in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars be allocated from the unassigned fund balance. Note, current unaudited UFB three thousand three million six hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. If approved, unaudited UFB three million six hundred and fourteen dollars and six hundred and twelve, six hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twelve. An effort will be made during FY two seven budget preparation to include a four-year service plan at the discounted rate.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Mackin, seconded by Counselor McWallen. Counselor comments? Seeing none, down to the public. Seeing none, back to the council for a vote. All those in favor? Seven zero. Right. Counselor Mackin, can I have you read order number, I'm sorry, Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number two forty dash twenty twenty-five? Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number two forty dash twenty twenty-five?
Order number two forty dash twenty twenty-five, providing for approval of letters for, for Katon Region Economic Development Director. Whereas the Katon Region Development Board has requested a letter of support of Milanock at Town Council toward their effort to continue funding the Katon Region Economic Development Director through the Penobscot County Commissioners. It is ordered that the Milanock at Town Council approves the attached letter of support to be signed and submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Danforth. If the council's okay with it, I'd like to go to public comment first. I believe we have some people here that would like to talk about this particular policy or letter of support. Council's okay with that? Not seeing anyone against it. Public comment?
Charles Prey, one one walking lane. Currently the Chair of the Katon Regional Economic Development Board. I've only been on the board for about seven months and took the place of the former Chair, who the Vice Chair then took over and the Vice Chair then moved out of the area. And the rest of the group chose me because I'm the only one that didn't have another job. Like the rest of them, so I got, I got the position, but the the Katon Regional Development Board is a seven-year-old organization. It was created for a five-year agreement with the county, then the Penobscot County gave it a two-year extension, which expired last month, the first of this month. We made a, an appeal for them to continue the funding. They came and met with us and basically asked for a greater collaboration of the organizations in the area, the economic development opportunities. For most of you, as you know, our Katon and the East Milanock Board of Selectmen of the owners of the Milanock, side in East Milanock, they've been participating with us with redrafting a proposal, which would include an additional to the eight communities in the northern part of the Penobscot County would include a representation from the unorganized territory. The funding for the KIDB Economic Development Position comes from taxes from the unorganized territory, from the Pilt Fund fund on the Katon Woods and Water National Monument and from, from the Pilt Fund, payment and move taxes, and the TIF Fund from the solar projects that are in the unorganized territory. There had been a complaint that the, and the funds are divided, twenty-five percent from the Pilt and seventy-five percent from the TIF Fund. Some of the people in the, that are affected by the tax increment financing complained that they were paying too large of a share. We had a meeting with the county commissioners down at the Katon Higher Learning Center, and it was suggested to reverse those funds. That's gonna be up to the county commissioners if they wanna do it. We're advocating and supporting it because that has about two point five million dollar balance in that account. And that money can be used for economic development. When the Pilt was written, that allows, that's one of the projects that it allows. On the, on the other side of funding of it in that mechanism, when I became Chair, I started looking at the demographics. I've always kind of been a person that looked at this type of stuff. I just wanna share some figures with you. My family glasses. And this, this is just Milanock. And this is based upon twenty twenty-three figures. They basically always follow about a year, a year and a half. Population of Milanock at twenty twenty-three was four thousand one hundred and two people. It's the largest of the eight communities there. It has a medium income in twenty twenty-three of about forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. It has a, it had a twenty-two point seven percent poverty level. The twenty twenty-four figures show a twenty-four point three, about a two percent increase. It's projected by the state that would lose population at about two tenths of a percent per year. And that the, we're the oldest of the eight communities. We are the poorest of the eight communities on average income. All the other seven towns, Milanock at Midway, East Milanock at Midway, Patton, Stacyville, Sherman, are all higher income on average than Milanock. And we do need economic development and we need to try. As I said, we're working with the Katon Collaborative, the Katon Chamber of Commerce, we're working with our Katon and the East Milanock Mel site. And we have several other groups that have offered and volunteered to assist us in redrafting a proposal to the county commissioners to how to structure this. I've proposed that we add people from the unorganized because the county commissioners said they had complaints. They didn't have representation. So I've proposed that they add two additional people, one from the northern part of the unorganized territory, one from the southern part, this area of the unorganized territory. So we give that broader representation and have and propose, these are all proposals going back to the county commission. That one would be major landowner or economic business interest, and the other one would represent residents that live in the UK. The total area of those communities is low over ten thousand people. No hospital, four thousand, so we're almost forty percent of what the district would represent. The funding in the past has been about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from that. Full of money from the taxes on the Pilt and the, and the TIF. And the Economic Development Officer is a hundred percent of that funding and support with that position, either equipment, computer, whatnot, transportation, or traveling through that that eight communities. None of it comes out of the organized terror, organized communities directly. But all these communities, of communities that support the unorganized territory in their needs, ambulance services, police, fire, through agreements and whatnot, and all the communities board of the UK. That's kind of a basic larger overview. If you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer.
Any councils have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I will just state, you'll see the attached letter, my names, my name is on it as signature as probably my last act, acting as chairperson is because Mr. Prey came to me with this request for, for a letter of support for that. And as he had stated, there restructuring the board and what the position would look like and the fact that it's much needed. And so I support, I support this letter. I've talked to Deb Brown Tree, there's other people on the board that's involved with this. They state a really good case. I know they're preparing to go meet with the commissioners at some time in the very near future before the end of November with a proposal on what this new board and position would look like and how it would benefit the region.
My estimate, estimation is that we probably would be starting around the first of the year. The county probably might approve of it next month in their meeting, monthly meeting, or on the first of the year. The funds are there, they can be allocated by the commissioners. It's not a tax increase or a levy that they have to do because taxes has already been agreed to in those two projects, the monument and the windmills.
Any other counselor comments? I will add mine. I was coming into this, this week with opposition and voting in favor of the slaughter. And I had a conversation with Ms. Roundtree, a couple of other people, including some that oppose the slaughter. And I firmly believe that there's a lot of good that can come from passing this letter and having that position be with the commissioners. And I'm in favor of second chances as well. I'm hoping that the county commissioners make a good decision here and pass this for the exact reasons that you said, you know, filter more money up here, you know, help with economic development as any way we can. Obviously, there's a lot of projects coming in the future and anything that can help bring people to the area, beautify Milanock, I'm in favor for. That being said, I'll go back down to public.
I just wanna add that as for the business community, anybody else that's listening, it's not just bringing in new business, it's helping existing business stay in business. It's to provide those smaller businesses that don't have available resources to get some of the additional help that they may need. It's to reach out to this person as well that, that would come in, that could help them get, and the employee in the past has always been under the Eastern Main Development Corporation. So they provide the technical, the, the support because when out of five oh one C three, they are, they pay the employment taxes, the that relates to it and, and cover the expense, healthcare and that type of stuff. To attract somebody to come into this area, do that. We're gonna try to push for more money than what they've been giving. I just gave you a history of what they have, but to attract somebody that might have, already have the skills that might wanna come into this area I think is gonna be required a little bit more than what is about. Two thirds of that goes to salary, a third of it is, is fringe benefits and those other taxes. And if you look around, a lot of the development, people trying to get somebody that already has that skill that might wanna come to this area, might come at a discounted price, but most people that are doing economic development are getting a lot more than what we're offering.
Yeah, I completely agree. Any other public comment? Back to the council, last chance. All right, seeing none, uh, I don't know. All those in favor? Seven zero.
I know. I know, I tried to correct him once too and realized we now have a full.
Yeah, there's seven of us now. All right, moving on, reports and communications, warrant committee for November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five council meeting will be Counselor Mackin and Counselor McWallen. Both of you are available?
Yeah.
Sounds wonderful. Our two new counselors, if you wouldn't mind communicating with one of them, try to find a good time for you to go in and learn. If you can't, as I already told you both, give me a call and I'll go in with you and I can show you how to do the warrants. Moving on to chair committee reports, is there any?
I, I don't have an age-friendly committee report. We won't be meeting in November. I'll select a date in December to reconvene.
Wonderful. And then we move on to two-minute public comment.
Hey, you again, John Raymond, two thirty-six Highland Avenue, all present in all the Gimmer Cruises. I thought this would be a good time right now to update the new counselors that, what we're doing and where we are and the successes we're having. Since the new opening of the trail to East Milanock, the numbers have been increasing big time. I don't have my count right now for this year, but last year from when the season ended to the end, from the beginning, maybe day to the end of the season, over fifty-six hundred people went off on that new trail. We're working on basically, there's a connection that's being worked on to go to the lake. We will be the host of the trail, we're not the ones working the landowner because the people that are working with it don't have a stump ATV club, but we said we would host it. And that would be a big plus for the area because one of the things we found out since we've got this trail open is on the weekends, there's not a lot of places to eat around Milanock, as you all know. So when you add the lake to it, there's four more places for people to go and eat. So it would be another destination. We're hoping that's gonna happen soon. We also, Charlie mentioned the Penobscot County Commissioners, we just received a grant from them to purchase a mini excavator. I paid sixty percent of it and we're picking it up this week, which is gonna help us maintain the trails. Right now, we have ourselves, ourselves a twenty-seven mile. That's a lot of trail to take here. And we hope that that's gonna help out with that. And also, we now have the museum as a five oh one three C, so we can take donations. That will help the museum and we're gonna be doing a completely rebuild of the museum when we get the monies that we need. And we all know the, what the marathon does for the weekend. That's coming up in December and we were lucky enough to talk it up with the, the health club. And Bronson Royal has decided to, that half of the, that the funds would be dedicated to our museum. And so anybody like to attend his van, you can get on our website and purchase ticket. So, thank you.
Perfect. Mr. Raymond, before you take off, it's been a while since I've had a presentation from you. I would love to talk about you possibly coming and presenting again, just on the topics that you just discussed.
Sure, and we, we've got a plan now we're looking at to help with alleviate with the access route traffic and stuff. I think it's gonna be a, a solution that we can all work with, offer something and move off of that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right. Good old vote. Who's in favor of leaving? Seven zero, we are now adjourned. Thank you.